To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Our God and our heavenly Father, we just thank you for the honor to be here tonight. I thank you for the lives that you've given to us and the responsibility to be able to take care of this matter. And I pray for this meeting, as we conduct the business of this council, and ask to say to Jesus, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Figg. Next up, our petition communication and miscellaneous matters. It has come to my attention that we have a council member who is not present tonight, and that in order for that council member to participate in the council meeting, we need to take some action. During the pandemic, council members were allowed to zoom in, and there was no restriction of this pending of the emergency order. We need to take some action to put in place a policy for remote attendance and voting by council members. And so we will have a resolution.
And, sorry. We will have a resolution amending council rules to allow online participation by council members. Mr. O'Brien, will you please read the resolution? Or do you want me to take a vote first to?
Well, I think we need to amend the rules to, we need to waive the rules to amend the agenda to add it.
Okay. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to add the resolution to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No one is opposed. It passes and now becomes part of tonight's agenda.
Right, so this, as you asked me to read the resolution, this is a resolution of the St. Joseph County Council amending the council rules. Whereas the St. Joseph County Council has previously adopted rules and regulations of the St. Joseph County Council, and section two point I of the council rules provides the council may alter its rules by way of resolution, and Indiana Code five dash fourteen dash one point five dash three point five affords local board members, you all, the ability to participate remotely in the absence of a statutorily declared emergency, and whereas Indiana Code five dash fourteen dash one point five dash three point five A permits local governing body members to utilize electronic means of communication to be considered present and to participate in certain final actions, and whereas Indiana Code five fourteen dash one point five dash three point five D requires the ratification of a policy setting parameters around virtual meetings for electronic participation, which is what you all are about to do. Now therefore be it resolved by the St. Joseph County Council that the rules and regulations of the St. Joseph County Council are hereby amended to create a new section, namely five E, called remote participation, to read as follows. Section five E, remote participation, number one, in the absence of a statutorily declared emergency, council members may participate in council meetings remotely, provided that at least five council members are physically present. We have that. An individual council member may participate in council meetings remotely, up to four times in a calendar year, with no more than two consecutive meetings being attended remotely. So we'll want to track that. Three, a council member who wishes to participate remotely shall notify at least one member of the council, of the council's rules committee, of the need to participate remotely at least 24 hours in advance of the commencement of the meeting, which I believe Mr. Catan's right to let everyone know that already. This constraint is necessary because of the potential that multiple council members may need to participate remotely while at least five members need to be present physically. Four, any person, including without limitation, a council member who participates remotely in a council meeting shall be required to participate with functional and operational audio and video, with such video turned on during such council meeting. Five, the council shall comply with all other requirements for remote participation as required by Indiana law. Six, this resolution shall be effective upon passage. So that is the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Any questions from the council for Mr. O'Brien? Hearing none. May I have a motion on the resolution?
Motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Second. A motion was made by Councilwoman Tanner to approve. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on the resolution? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Mark, I don't think you can vote quite yet. As soon as we get done with this, that's why we're doing it first thing, you'll be able to vote.
We need to see your face.
Very thanks. Thanks, Mark.
So anybody, any council member opposed? This resolution is passed by a vote of eight to zero. Yeah. Councilman Catan's right. Is it possible you could turn your camera on for us?
Is it weird?
Next up on the agenda is still petition communication and miscellaneous matters. We have a statement from the Health Department on changes to the organizational structure and personnel of the Health Department in preparation for SB four. Mr. Levin?
Thank you, Mr. Root. Dr. Sherbin cannot be here today. He is also on vacation, so he asked me to let the council know that there are going to be changes coming up with the Health Department with regard to meeting all of the core items that are going to be required under SB four, so we can, we can participate in and get the full funding. Those are going to be structural changes and then some programming changes. They're yet to be determined, but the Health Department has already started them, and obviously the funding matches and the requests are going to come before you guys. The core departments that we had before that Dr. Enters had put in place are all staying. There's no significant structure changes there, although some of the positions have been moved around. Most notably, the reporting requirements for SB four require tracking and, of course, across all the departments, not just some of the stuff that the Health Department was tracking before. So we've moved those folks underneath the administrator so that we can better keep track of the progress that the Health Department's going to make under SB four. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Any questions for Mr. Levin from the council? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a motion on the minutes for the June meeting, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the June meeting minutes. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The minutes for the June meeting are approved. Next up are St. Joseph County Board appointments. Mr. Fig, would you please make a motion on these?
Yes. Mr. President, St. Joe County Animal Control Commission, Dr. Kathy Harris, DMV. An Emergency Management Advisory Board is Councilman Dan Schatzel. My motion.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion or other nominations for these positions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Dr. Kathy Harris is appointed to the St. Joseph County Animal Control Commission, and Councilman Dan Schatzel is appointed to the Emergency Management Advisory Board. Next up is a report from the county auditor.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Next up is a report from the county commissioner, and we are honored tonight to have President Baxmeyer of the commissioners here to present the State of the County.
Well, thank you. Before I start, I just want to make one brief comment. As I was walking through the halls of the building today, somebody stopped me and said, Carl, why are you giving the 2023 State of the County address? Got half a year to go. And I said, well, I know all of you know, and probably most of the audience knows, but it really is a retrospective on what occurred in 2022. And the reason I mention that is I want people to know that a lot of what was accomplished, virtually all of what was accomplished, especially in economic development, wouldn't have been possible without the support and actions by the council and the commissioners and others. And they were done pretty much in a unanimous fashion. And I just want to let people know that even though there are some who are no longer with us and have gone on to other endeavors, their work and support last year was greatly appreciated. So with that, I'll try to be brief. The next two hours will go by very quickly. President Root, members of the council, auditor Murphy, and fellow residents of St. Joseph County, thank you for this opportunity to address you and present the great work being accomplished every day by the public servants in every department of county government. This is my first opportunity to present the State of the County address. Preparing this gave me the chance to gain better appreciation of county government. Reviewing the submissions by 30 departments, I want to express my appreciation for the documents and recognize all the work that went into their preparation. Unfortunately, the next few moments only allow me time to point out the highlights of what was accomplished by our officials and dedicated employees. To fully appreciate what has been achieved, please feel free, and I hope many will, review the full document that contains all the submissions, because there are just so many things that were accomplished last year that aren't, time doesn't permit to be listed. Starting with the auditor, county auditor Mike Hammond completed his second term of office as county auditor at the close of 2022. Mike, whose service was very much appreciated, has been succeeded by former deputy auditor John Murphy, now auditor, who will continue to build upon the services provided through the auditor. Of course, the key thing is working with the county council and commissioners in preparation of the 2023 budget in the amount of $208.8 million. The auditor's office published dozens of financial reports during 2022 that are available to the public on the auditor's webpage. These reports include the annual budget, the annual financial report, audit report, and bond rating reports. And John and his assistant deputy auditor, Abby Doyle, have certainly continued that work. Archives continues to receive boxes of records for cataloguing, scanning, and storing. In the basement of Building One, all boxes have been removed from their skids and placed on shelving units, representing the movement of 5,621 boxes in 2022. The Building Department has achieved all-time high in permit issuance, revenue, and construction valuation. The Building Department issued 12,107 permits, performed 15,172 inspections, and traveled 97,688 miles in serving the residents of St. Joseph County and the city of South Bend. The Ducom Center continued to decrease the number of residents and increase the number on home detention. The SJCC continues to report one of the lowest recidivism rates in the state for any residential construction correctional facility. EMA welcomed our new director, Al Kurtzitz, and deputy director Jim Lopez. They continued to seek grant funding to assist in their efforts to safeguard St. Joseph County residents during emergency situations. A key effort of the EMA in 2022 was the start of the emergency siren upgrade. This 1.5 million upgrade of sirens in the county was initiated in 2022 and will be finished in 2023. Through the Department of Infrastructure, Planning, and Growth, the Division of Public Works completed or had under contract over 13 million in community investment funds on road and bridge program. This related to paving of about 32 miles of roadway with another eight miles under contract to be paved this year. In addition, the Highway Department chip sealed an additional 22 miles within the county. Using an additional 4 million of our American Rescue Plan funds to be used for paving severely deteriorated mainline roads, this allowed for the paving of approximately 11 central line miles of roadway within our county. And the County Council also appropriated $800,000 of American Rescue Plan funds to be used for the prepare contract documents and demolish and decommission the Granger Highway Garage site. Economic development, after doing years of preparatory work, many projects across the county started to move forward. This included the Honeysuckle Project in New Carlisle, the Mullen Automotive purchase of the Electric Last Mile Solutions property, abatement and construction on the EVS site at the industrial park at Pine and Edison, announcement that the Nick D train station will be relocated to the west side of the South Bend International Airport, and work on the MG, GM, excuse me, LG Ultium cells, which is now the GM Samsung project in the Enterprise Center. That's a major effort and really points out one of the key things that was done last year collaboratively, but through the county. Planning zoning and code divisions. They completed the discovery, visioning, and framework phases of the comprehensive, new comprehensive plan. They launched the county's first code enforcement program, completed four text amendments to the zoning ordinance, worked with the Building Department to identify blighted properties and initiate condemnation and demolition of several unsafe structures, completed the drafting and public outreach for the IEC overlay district. The Surveyor's Office, at the close of '22, that also saw the end of the outstanding 50-year career of county surveyor John McNamara. The Surveyor's Office with the GIS Department updated the website with more data and interactive mapping. The Drainage Board cleaned or repaired 45 miles of open ditches or subsurface drainage tile. The Maintenance Department in 2022 was a year that saw several successfully completed projects, including a new roof on the Archives building that was completed on time and under budget, so they really deserve a round of applause for that. Initial steps forward for other new improvements that will be completed this year include the re-roof of the jail, improvements to the county city lobby, and improved security measures. In 2022, the Probate Court established a court-appointed mediator program. This program aims to mediate property custody, primary custody, and parenting time cases prior to having the case heard in court. This program has been very successful in producing an agreement between the parties without the need for often lengthy and contentious court hearings. The probation department saw the continuation of previously successful programming, and new programming was added, which included the five-star life curriculum, which focuses on character, leadership, and mindset development for youth, a new pilot program, the SWIFT, Necessary and Purposeful SNAP program, to serve the at-risk children and families of our community. The Detention Department at the St. Joseph County Juvenile Justice Center went into 2022 with the annual goal of being in full compliance with the Indiana Department of Corrections standards. The Juvenile Justice Center scored 100% on all mandatory standards and 98% for recommended standards, resulting in full compliance. Wished I had received those kinds of scores when I was in high school. Procurement. The Department of Procurement continued its productive efforts to serve all the departments and divisions of St. Joseph County. This included processing 10,484 purchase orders, training 18 new fiscal officers on various aspects of procurement, and executing 247 change orders. The Prosecutor's Office achieved an increased felony conviction rate, closing 1,355 felony cases with a conviction rate of 80.8%. 2022 was the first full year of the High Tech Crimes Unit, of which there are 10, following the model of the Cyber Crimes Unit. A High Tech Crimes Unit collectively handled 2,103 cases and examined 2,955 items of digital evidence. And I would note that the Cyber Crimes Unit was the recipient of several awards recognizing their excellence. The Recorder. The Recorder's Office recorded 36,564 documents with 84% filed electronically. The Treasuries Office collected property tax payments totaling $323,435,750 in 2022. A more favorable financial picture due to the rising interest rates resulted in a significant increase in investment earnings during the latter half of the year. Waits and Measures performed 7,827 tests and inspection. 7,296 were approved and sealed, and 537 inspections were tested and rejected. The Department of Health reports that it achieved each of the goals and nearly every objective of the department's four-year strategic plan. Applying for new and continued grants remained a significant portion of the Health Department activities. Noteworthy activities included the weekly refugee screening clinic that enabled multiple refugees, particularly individuals from fleeing persecution in Afghanistan and Ukraine, to pursue a healthy start in our county. Partnership with the Women's Care Center to reduce infant and maternal mortality was started, and protecting the community from a myriad of communicable diseases and health burdens was another noteworthy activity. The IT Department welcomed Director Richard Warfield to the team. In addition to responding to day-to-day help desk requests, the IT Department continued to tighten cybersecurity. Public Defender Department saw the retirement of Chief Public Defender James Corporal after a long and distinguished legal career, including this service to St. Joe County. The department handled approximately 1,585 felony cases, over 700 juvenile cases, and over 1,500 misdemeanor cases. The Adult Probation Department continued efforts to reduce recidivism within our community by appropriately assessing, referring, monitoring, and supervising individuals placed under their supervision. The work of the Pre-Trial Services Division to assess all felony arrestees prior to their initial hearing resulted in 1,535 pretrial service assessments which were completed last year. The Circuit Court hears the majority of all civil filings and felony cases involving non-support of a dependent child and welfare fraud cases. The court had 5,602 new civil filings and disposed of 7,682 cases. They also had 18 new criminal filings and disposed of 101 cases. St. Joseph County Parks, which manages over 1,300 acres of public access, green space, river and stream corridors, wetlands and woods, they saw the overall park and off-site event attendance come just shy of 340,000 users last year. Using American Rescue Plan funds, St. Joseph County Parks completed several significant projects. They upgraded six indoor rental facilities. They purchased new cross-country ski equipment and tubing covers. And importantly, they repaved all for ready Bago Creek County Park and many of, much of St. Joe, St. Patrick's County Park roadways. The Public Safety Commission, Julie Toby was appointed and welcomed as the executive director. In 2022, the 911 Center processed 439,000 calls and 16,000 texts to 911. The dispatchers also participated in monitoring over 3 million radio transmissions. In total, SJC 911 dispatched 300, 232,000 calls for service, which was 50,000 more than in 2021. 85% of those calls were police-related and 15 were fire and EMS. Our County Police Department recorded a decrease in property crimes, which included burglary, robbery, auto theft, and theft, while experiencing an increase in mental health and domestic violence cases. Overall, total reports were up slightly in 2022 to 7,404, while bookings at the jail were down. We want to thank the continued efforts of our dedicated members who serve the police department and work in the jail. Portage Manor, under the direction of Administrator Courtney Mullins and staff, outstanding care has been delivered to the residents of Portage Manor. Uncertainty regarding the future of the facility continued throughout the year, with the delivery of a feasibility study on a potential new building as well as operations of the facility. This follows a previous study documenting the physical needs of the facility. In the Superior Court, Chief Judge Hurley stated that business was back to normal, opened and open to the public, while continuing to embrace many of the technological developments that resulted from COVID-19, since they enhance court access for lawyers, litigants, and the public. All four felony judges continued the use of video court. The state-approved Zoom accounts continued to be used when appropriate, which offers greater convenience for lawyers and litigants. The state also continued to host a website that the public can view courts that are live streaming the proceedings. 2022, Superior Court saw 22,346 new court filings. They conducted 75 jury trials, and thousands of St. Joseph County citizens engaged in one of the most important civic duties and reported for jury service. We're halfway through, as I mentioned, 2023. Many of the initiatives are already started and should be completed this year. In addition, there are some in this that I would respectfully suggest warrant consideration and implementation. For Portage Manor, while the closing of the facility is currently underway, what comes next for the facility needs to be planned. The Facility Condition Assessment and Space Allocation Study is being done with proposals that were actually received today. The Facility Condition Assessment will tell us what to expect to keep all our buildings up and running, but especially the county city building. We need to maintain this building as operational. It's essential that the council and commissioners have that information upon which to plan. Anderson Road, as it relates to the Highway Garage, to deliver services to the northeast portion of the county on par with other areas in terms of being timely and efficient, we need a satellite highway garage. In regards to the Anderson Road Park, regardless of the final decision on the garage, we should begin development of the Anderson Road Park, which will further enhance our quality of life and provide a needed resource. Fleet Management. With the proposal review currently underway and funding through ARP allocation in place, we should be able to start the fleet management program this year. Policy Manual is something that has been started, and we need to complete that effort to update our policy manual. Implementation of Senate Bill Four, we heard a report from the Health Department. There are actions that need to be taken by the commissioners and council county. Going forward, we've decided to accept the additional funding. For public health, we need to have a collaborative effort for implementation, including preparation of a budget, which will start in January in 2024. And finally, just to go back to the State of the County, I'm going to ask the elected officials and department heads to submit their reports in January so they can be compiled in February and the State of the County delivered to the council in March. And let me be clear once again, the late decision to deliver this so late in the year, that was mine, not anybody else's, and in no way reflects on the work that other people did. A timely report delivery will better inform, allow for easier comparison of accomplishments, and provide a listing of objectives for the coming year. With that, council members, thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to our combined efforts working towards a continued bright future for St. Joe County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Baxmeyer. Next up is a report from Council Special Committee. Seeing no special committee reports, clerk, will you please read the first bill?
Bill number 9323, a resolution determining that the qualifications for an economic revitalization area have been met and declaring resolution number R16-23 of the St. Joseph County Council declaring an area of that county to be an economic revitalization area, confirming resolution. Petitioner, Ed Coat LLC.
Bill number 92-23 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee?
Bill number 93 dash, is that a, that can't be the same. Bill 93, resolution determining that the qualifications for an economic revitalization area have been met and declaring resolution number R12-22 of the St. Joseph County Council declaring an area of that county to be an economic revitalization area, confirming resolution. Petitioner, Max Plastics, Inc.
Bill number 93-23 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee? That concludes our first readings for tonight. Next up will be salary amendments. Clerk, will you please read our first salary amendment?
Sure. Bill 898423, an ordinance amending ordinance 115-22, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixings the number of employees of St. Joseph County Council for the year 2023. Petitioner, auditor?
Committee report, please. Chairman Schatzel.
Bill number 8423 comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner? Petitioner?
It's John Murphy, county auditor with offices on the second floor. We talked at the committee meeting that we have changed the payroll administrator for the county. John Butler is now performing those duties. His position is listed in the budget as project manager, and for the next year, we're going to change that to payroll administrator slash project manager. But that leaves the payroll administrator position vacant, so we were going to eliminate that position and set up a lower position called bookkeeper, someone that could help with the accounts payable, accounts receivable, and do some payroll work. We wanted that salary to be $48,000. Happy to answer any questions as you have.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing none, thank you. We will now open the public hearing on bill number 84-23. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing on bill 84-23 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve was made by Councilman Fig. It was seconded by Councilman Tanner. Any further council discussion? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
The bill passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 84-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read our next bill?
Bill number 85-23, an ordinance amending ordinance 115-22, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner, clerk?
Thank you. Councilman Shetzel, committee report, please?
Bill number 85-23 comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Hello, thank you. Amy Rolfis, Office of the County Clerk located in the basement of the county city building. This is, as we had talked before, merges the two budgets between the voter registration office and the county clerk's office. That was formally done at the end of January by the commissioners by unanimous vote to combine the two departments, and this is the final process of combining the two budgets. So that's what we have here.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Rolfis, whenever we approved the, a different position that came in front of the council a few months back, in particular, Director of Finance for the Commissioner's Office, one of the budgetary considerations for that was to utilize the benefits portion of compensation that had been recovered, so to speak, from the voter registration office to fund that position, albeit it hasn't been filled yet, but that was the justification for the use of those funds. With you combining the past voter registration office budget with your office budget, has that consideration been taken into account?
Hopefully, I can understand the question clearly. Are you talking about the benefits package of the reduced number of people from voter registration coming to the clerk's office?
That's correct.
Right. We realize that as a savings. We don't, we haven't put that in. We realize that as a savings that we will make, the benefits and the, and the perf and all of that, the health benefits. $18,000 is what it generally is per employee, I believe?
Just to be clear, it's a savings to your departmental budget, not necessarily to the county if we fulfill that position. That's not under your purview. That's for the commissioners to hire that role, but that, those additional funds are not included in your budget.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes. Sorry for not quite understanding the question.
No, I appreciate the clarity.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill number 85-23. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing no one, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? All right. Bill number 85-23, the public hearing is now over on this bill. May I have a motion on bill number 85-23?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve was made by Councilman Shetzel. It was seconded by Councilman Thomas. Any further council discussion on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 85-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read our next bill, please?
Bill number 86-23, an ordinance amending ordinance 115-22, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner, county council?
Thank you. Councilman Shetzel, committee report, please?
86-23 comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
That would be me.
That would be you.
That would be me. Okay, this ordinance here, what I proposed to bring up our county clerk, our county auditor, and our county assessor to $100,000, and I did this because just trying to, or just bring up our salaries. My goal is to bring up salaries of our entire county, and I felt these three, these are the three largest departments, and these need to bring up to this amount, $100,000. And that's why I asked for the council's approval.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner from the council? Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Fig, one of the discussion items that came up during our council committee meeting a couple weeks ago was identifying that the clerk is also compensated an additional $5,000 for her role on the election board. Are you willing to accept an amendment to the recommendation to account for that $5,000 of additional compensation?
Not at this time, no. No, I don't leave them all three at $100,000.
So the clerk's subsequent pay would be $105,000 for the sake of the community's awareness?
Well, she has to, different responsibilities that she has outside the clerk.
Okay. Any further comments or questions, Mr. Shetzel?
Kind of clarify that. Mr. Tanner, is that amount, 500,000? I thought it was 4,088. Is that correct?
No, it's closer to 5,000.
It's closer to 5,000.
I was rounding up, but it does round up to 5,000.
So I guess I have a question, because Brian was asking about entertaining an amendment. So I don't know if this is an appropriate time for me to ask if I could propose an amendment, or when do I, would I do that? I don't know why you can't hear me, unless I, I guess I have to eat the microphone.
Yep. The, we don't have a motion yet to approve in a second, so just a little premature on amendment to the.
Any further comments from the council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill number 86-23. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Please come, give your name and address, and you have three minutes to address the council.
Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Ray, President/CEO, Southland Regional Chamber, with offices at 101 North Michigan Street here in South Bend. Representing the business community, we have 1,300 members, employ about 70,000 people across northern Indiana and southwest lower Michigan. We recognize the number-one challenge with every one of those businesses, attracting and retaining the talent that they need to perform the functions that they do in their businesses. We know the government in general has lagged behind and hasn't always had the resources to provide what they needed to attract that top talent and keep it. One of the things that happens in the department manager is that becomes the ceiling, and everyone else must typically be underneath it. So we applaud the county for recognizing, not only in these positions and many positions, that challenge, much like the private sector has recognized, and we encourage you to approve this ordinance this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Please come, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
Sharon Benicki, South Bend, Indiana. I am here tonight to speak in opposition of the proposed raises for the three newly-elected officials. When the officials in question ran for office, they should have known the compensation package, what the duties of the position required. Proper research before running is essential. Know what you're getting into before you get there. These raises are a slap in the face to the employees who have been with the county for the last five, 10, 20-plus years, the employees who stood by the county when raises were not given, whether it was because money wasn't there, or in the case of the last five to seven years, concern over the fiscal cliff. Employees were told, "We appreciate you and won't forget your sacrifices when we get past these hard times." I realize money, many here today weren't around for those tough conversations, but if you look into the past budgets for the last 10 years, you would quickly discover why salaries are so low for the frontline faces of the county. Amy Rolfis stated that she was struggling with losing employees and finding new employees. Every time you lose an employee with any length of service, you lose more than just a body. You lose the knowledge that employee has amassed over time, but more importantly, you lose the personal relationships that have developed over time. The solution to getting and keeping valued employees is to show them that they are valued. You do that by increasing the workers' wages, not raising your own. Many of these employees have been working here long before the set elected officials were elected, and they'll hopefully be around long after they're gone. In the case of two of them, they're term limited. Mike is claiming credit for tax appeals being down to 4,000 from a high of 22,000 this year. The appeals are based on last year's assessments, so that was done under a different elected official, so he's trying to claim credit for something he didn't have a hand in. Again, the employees that did the work last year should be rewarded. Just because you can do something doesn't mean you should do it. Is the council prepared to bump up the rest of the full-time elected officials up to 100,000? Has anyone looked long-term to verify that these salaries are sustainable? How do newly-elected officials go back to their offices and look the frontline workers in the eye and basically say, "I am worth a raise of 43%, while you are only worth 3%," even though those workers have been underpaid for years? Last year, Social Security got a bump of 8.7%. Consumer Price Index between the period of April 2022 till April 2023 was 4.9.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Food costs have rose 7.7% amid all this last year. You're offering a 3% raise to employees.
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you.
Inflation is 8.7, so your employees just lost 6% of their wage. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill?
Sir, I have a question. Am I appropriate? I'm not opposing. I want to speak for, I just happened to go to the ladies' room, so I missed that. Is that available to speak?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
We need your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. I'm Virginia Sapola, and my address is 22045 Sandy Brook Drive, South Bend. On May 2, 2022, the county clerk then the time Democrat Rita Glenn was seen going on camera in the absentee ballot box room alone, which is a crime. The law is that a Democrat and a Republican repudue present. Rita was seen on camera going in with an empty bag and exiting with a bag of what appeared to be ballots and proceeded to stuff these long strips of paper into the trash can, shoving them around. It was also verified that members of the Democratic Party had had numerous keys made that were designated for the Republican Party. And please.
Ma'am, my attorney tells me that you are out of order. I'm going to ask you to please sit down.
This was.
That's not what we're talking about, ma'am.
Okay.
Not at all. Not at all.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, that might be something for privilege of the floor, but this is with regard to this specific salary ordinance.
That's fine.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Thank you, Mr. Morton.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Do I see a, is there a hand there?
There is.
Michael? Michael, go ahead. You have three minutes. Oh, okay. Doesn't look like there's anybody online, then. All right. The public hearing on bill number 86-23 is now closed. May I have a motion on this bill, please?
I would like, I can't amend it, no, okay.
Pretty soon.
Motion to pass.
Motion to pass?
Second.
Second. A motion to pass was made by Councilwoman Drake. It was seconded by Council, Councilman Thomas. Any further council discussion on this bill? And I would like to actually go first on this one, and I would like to offer an amendment to this bill. I would like to offer an amendment that we add to this bill to read that line number 1000-1007-0000-0070, county surveyor unlicensed, 70,915-00, to read 1000-11007-0000-0070, county surveyor unlicensed, 70,915. Current, 11007-0070, county surveyor licensed, 70,915, to read 1000-11007-0000-0070, county surveyor licensed, 106,373,000. It has come to our attention in the past two weeks that we were out of compliance with state law on the surveyor's salary, that state law has a tiered system for the county surveyor, and that the county surveyor, if he is unlicensed, may, that a licensed surveyor must make one and a half times the amount of an unlicensed surveyor. Our new surveyor, who is also a new elected official this year, is currently unlicensed. And therefore, in order for us to fix his compensation at the amount that he was told that this job would entail when he came into office back in January, we need, the council needs to take a fix, to fix the language to reflect the fact that we have an unlicensed surveyor in office. So that is my amendment. I would ask for a second on my amendment.
Second.
We've got a motion made by Councilman Root, seconded by Councilman Morton. Is there any further discussion on this amendment? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll on the amendment?
Mr. Shetzel?
No.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
No.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes seven to.
Thank you. Let the record show that the amendment was passed by a vote of seven to two. It now becomes part of the council discussion and final vote on this bill. Further council discussion on this bill?
I would like to offer an amendment as well.
Councilwoman Hess?
I would like to make an amendment to adjust the salaries for the three elected officials that we were first discussing from 100,000 to 90,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to amend the bill made by Councilwoman Hess, seconded by Councilwoman Tanner, to reduce the amount from 100,000 to 90,000. Any further council comments on the amendment? Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. Root. On face value, I want to support increasing the ceiling of what our elected officials make as it does to Mr. Ray's point, potentially place an artificial ceiling on what other qualified employees earn within our, within the county as an organization and as a public body. However, it is notable that the discrepancy between these elected officials, barring one exception, and their, so to speak, second-in-command is approaching 30,000 to even 40,000 based on what was proposed, and I think that is excessive beyond what the rest of our county employees and our ability to provide services may support. It may also be beyond what we can justify to the constituents and voters of St. Joseph County as a reasonable increase in the middle. as a reasonable increase in the middle of the year. To that end, I would be in support of the reduction from $100,000 as presented to $90,000 as a more reasonable ceiling for the remainder of 2023.
Any further council discussion on the amendment? Hearing non-clerk, will you please take the roll on the amendment?
Mr. Martin? Mr. Fig?
No.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mrs. Drake?
No.
Mr. Shetzel? Mr... President Root? The amendment does not pass, 3 to 6.
The amendment did not pass. It is not part of the current discussion and bill. Further council discussion on Bill Number 86-23?
President Root?
Councilwoman Hess?
Okay, the reason I made the amendment, proposed the amendment, and related to Mr. Tanner's remarks as well. The request for this salary increase, 100,000, really was predicated by a request for a $120,000-a-year job a couple of months ago by the commissioners, a job for which we first received absolutely no job description for. It was just going to be a financial advisory position for the commissioners, even though we have an auditor and we have a financial consultant. So we eventually got a rather flimsy job description, which was a bit of HR, a bit of finance, a bit of grants. And we finally got a much more robust description for that job, which became much more an HR executive, human resources executive position. The request remained at $120,000, but we did vote that in at 100,000. That was the highest salary that the county had seen. So, and why it had to be rushed through, my understanding is still not filled, and why at that amount, I'm still unclear. And I'll summarize my concerns here. Why a 43% increase in salaries after just six months on the job? Why not wait until 2024 budget planning, which begins, by the way, next Monday? We could have a much more robust discussion while we're looking at the overall budget, how it all fits together. Will this also set a precedent for future newly elected officials? Everyone's going to run for office and come in asking for a raise when they assume office? And as a counselor, I'm not here to micromanage departments. My only direct interaction with any of these positions is that of the auditor, who we rely on for our reports. So I can speak to that performance and also to Mr. Murphy's performance as deputy auditor for the past five years. But that's the only job I can really speak to with much knowledge. I can review Mr. Castellan's performance as penitentiary successor, but don't have as much contextual reference to his overall performance. This year, he has also been awarded a $1.146 million worth of federal ARP dollars for a three-year subscription to a market analysis program and training. Again, Ms. Rolfe is new to government and to the clerk's office, and while she has indeed initiated many changes and also absorbed the employees and responsibilities of the voter registration office, I can't speak to whether or not that has improved the functionality in that office. She also received an additional nearly $5,000 for her role on the election board, which Mr. Tanner said. One of Ms. Rolfe's stated accomplishments also was that she was one of 10 county clerks that accompanied Secretary of State Diego Morales to observe an election in Guatemala. But I can't really speak. I don't know if Councilman Fig or other counselors spoke with the other departments or constituencies with whom any of these individuals, department heads, engaged or served for their feedback on the outcomes related to the changes they made. So you can go ahead and you can make changes, but what are those changes? What are the impact that those changes are having? I don't see that we have any measure of performance to support a 43% raise. It has to be made right now for the remainder of this year when we could have a more robust discussion at budget time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further council discussion on Bill Number 86-23?
Councilman Root.
Councilman Shetzel?
Given what Councilwoman Hess said, I think it may be appropriate to allow Clerk Rolfe, if you have the description that you gave, the summary that you gave us, to be able to tell us exactly what she's done.
I've read what she has done, but there aren't any outcomes.
But I'd like, I think it's.
I think if a counselor wants to read that into the record, that would be acceptable. I'm not sure I want to open the floor here to discussion with members of the public. So if a counselor would like to read that into the record, that's fine.
I can read it into the record. That will take.
You are free to do that, if that's what you want to do.
All right, then I will. This is dated... This is the five-month update from Clerk Rolfe, January to June 2023. As we look back on my first five months in the clerk's office, many exciting changes are in progress. With a staff of 54 dedicated employees, our common goal is to serve the 270,000 people of St. Joseph County with efficient and accurate record-keeping, secure and transparent election processes, and excellent customer service. Early in my term, I recognized the vastness of the responsibilities of the clerk's duties and began to lay the groundwork for a comprehensive revisioning for the office. A complete and total restructuring of the department was my first initiative. Attending to personnel at the outset, a competent and dedicated leadership team has been developed, tapping into 30-plus years of expertise from within the clerk's department. Our newly created organizational chart has provided clarity of roles and responsibilities for a department that is geographically spread over three locations: courthouse complex, Mishawaka County Services Building, probate court, with 14 separate offices serving 11 judges, four magistrates, and responsible for $23 million annually. A newly created position of the chief deputy of elections is held by Tricia Carrico, five-plus years of experience in St. Joseph County voter registration and elections, municipal, county, state, and presidential, and 15 years as an experienced manager in the private business sector. I credit Tricia with leading an impactful transformation in voter registration and for the recent merging of VR into the clerk's office, which will result in efficiency and accountability. The eventual reorganization of the physical space next to the clerk's office to accommodate VR clerks will improve communication and simplify processes for elections. The elections processes benefit from Tricia's passion for building high-performance, customer-based teams of clerks with extensive knowledge of Indiana election code, voter registration requirements, and the Indiana election calendar. Our first primary election in May 2023 was an outstanding manifestation of transparency, bipartisanship, and following all required processes and the law. We added multiple safeguards to the absentee ballot room in addition to restructuring the absentee early voting supervisor's role and responsibilities, and of course, the key situation: elections clerk. With the aid of our elections clerk, Kim Ryskovich, and her 15 years of experience in elections, the St. Joe County Elections Division is well-prepared. Kim worked tirelessly during the primary election season, and the result was an election that initiated the restoration of public trust in St. Joe County elections. We completed a primary election review session to acknowledge opportunities for improvement moving forward. Plans are in place for expanding the recruitment process for voter center workers, absentee workers, and improving all forms of election training and creating and documenting all policies and procedures. Our strong relationship with the Indiana Election Division, who serves as the highest authority in the state regarding election law, ensures all election laws are followed. Our chief deputy of the clerks is Janet Yarborough, bringing nine-plus years of experience working for the clerk's office with expertise in probate and the juvenile justice system. Janet is building relationships with the judicial staff in all courts to ensure the clerk's work is accurate, timely, and efficient, with a strong foundation in training and accountability. Janet is prioritizing cross-training for all clerks to improve workflow and efficiency throughout all offices. The passion for customer service has inspired Janet to plan for training opportunities as well as creating a customer satisfaction scale to be used as a feedback strategy. Two newly created positions of first deputy have provided for boots-on-the-ground oversight for the 50-plus clerks serving the courts each day. The first deputies have unique insight drawn from years of experience in the clerk's office in many different departments. Both are flourishing in their supervisory roles and are thriving with this opportunity for professional growth and development. Our financial department handles over $23 million per year. After an initial trial of a newly created position for a finance deputy, we reevaluated the efficiency and productivity of the position and pivoted to a financial supervisor. The recent reorganization of the department with new job titles, roles, and responsibilities has offered more clarity, transparency, and accountability. Soon, we will do a deep dive into the financial practices of the office to assess the current procedures, investigating and implementing best practices, and consulting with the Fifth Third Bank and the SBOA to ensure adherence to all codes and laws. We look forward to customizing the annual budget to accurately reflect the needs of the clerk's office through redefining job titles, clarifying line items, and close examination of various accounts associated with the clerk's department. Our bipartisan leadership team, through collaboration, communication, and a shared vision, has taken on a variety of changes that will positively impact the clerks, the judicial staff, and the community. We are listening and attending to our clerk's concerns and observations, and we have been pleased to implement several of the suggested changes to improve efficiency. Through our current restructuring, we are establishing standard operating procedures in every aspect of the department to preserve and document institutional knowledge. Additionally, we aim to make the clerk's office transactions more accessible to the public, perhaps through a 24/7 kiosk. Plans to enhance the clerk's website, to make it more user-friendly, interactive, and informational are underway as well. I'm going to move down here. Accomplishments and initiatives for the clerk's office. Addressing the clerk's physical safety of transporting huge amounts of cash, one day $15,000 in cash arrived from a clerk using her own transportation. I have implemented new technologies and procedures through contracting with smart safe solutions. Although it is a significant cost of the clerk's budget, around $24,000 a year, this eliminates an extremely high-risk process that has been in place for decades. The new process increases transparency, accuracy, and efficiency regarding finance. All departments are now required to create and document and implement standard operating procedures, and these are collected and retained in the main clerk's office as well as in the departments. Step-by-step instructions with corresponding screenshots provide information to new hires and other clerks stepping in to cover absences. The SOPs have also highlighted the need for consistent processes across all office locations. And I have a page, almost two full pages here that I could continue to read, and I'm sure you're all tired of hearing me read. So I'm going to shorten a little bit of this. I'm going to hit a couple of the highlights that I think just show the exceptional job that Clerk Rolfe has done. In partnership with Probate Court at the Juvenile Justice Center, we have committed $500,000 in IVD funding to provide operating costs for five years to expand the use of a dedicated child support courtroom. This major investment will benefit custodial and non-custodial parents who are entangled in litigation regarding financial support by resolving cases at a faster rate. And although I have not been in one of those cases in my life, I have family members who have been, and I'm sure something like this will be a blessing to those folks. I would also like to read one more paragraph in the back. By means... By no means am I reading all the accomplishments. Recognizing a lack of diversity in the employees in the clerk's office, I believe when Ms. Rolfe took over, one of 53 employees were African-American, and one of 53 spoke Spanish. She says, "I have made intentional qualified hires to reflect our constituents more accurately. To better serve our Spanish-speaking constituents totaling almost 10% of St. Joe County population, I have hired five native speakers as clerks dispersed throughout the offices. Additionally, I have hired four male employees and four women of color." One more thing, which kind of shows the forward thinking of our current clerk. In order to increase accessibility for non-custodial parents to pay child support, we are in discussions with the Indiana Child Support Bureau to pilot a kiosk program. This technology would provide 24/7 access for payments and increase the likelihood of our non-banking, under-resourced demographic. This convenient form of payment would increase likelihood of getting money into the hands of the custodial parents to provide for the children of our community. I think she's done an amazing job, and I think if we want to continue to get people like her in the clerk's office, we need to pay them right. I support the $100,000.
Thank you. Any further council discussion on this bill?
Mr. Root?
Councilwoman Drake?
I'd like to add a couple of things that Dan didn't say that I thought Amy did well, because she's done so much. Another thing she did was institute flex time so people could better take care of their families while working for her, which I love. And she also has a lot of the relationships between the clerks and judges in court are online. So she's done coffee and donuts to make sure people see each other face-to-face and get to know each other. I think those are two extra additions that are very nice.
Thank you. Any further council discussion? Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I indicated to you before the meeting that I was in support of raises and passage of this bill, that I felt that something was appropriate. But I... And while I respect everybody who's up here, I feel like this is becoming a mockery of the council and what our duty is here, which is to the constituents and to the fiscal responsibility of the county. There is not a single person here or in any position in any organization in the world who gets to make their own annual review six months early without any kind of corresponding oversight and just take it at face value to justify a raise. There may be many claims. There may be universal claims that were in that statement that are accurate. There might be. There is nothing to support it outside of effectively an extensive journal entry that expands beyond what we just heard from an entire state of the county, from our president of our commissioners tonight. What are we doing here? Has anybody talked to the technicians and the polling place workers to provide supporting feedback to all these claims? Who among our judges or court staff are providing supporting feedback to the effectiveness of how the clerk's office is operating right now? I know there are people who wanted to speak tonight that did not get permission by those who they work for out of fear of retribution to that accord. Who among attorneys representing plaintiffs, defendants, or the state have provided supporting feedback to these claims? Because I have honestly heard zero. And if none have been supported, then the report by County Clerk Rolfe is no more than just self-congratulatory plans and unverifiable information. And I'm now tempted to vote against any of these raises until we've been able to verify the accomplishments of every single person. The only person to... The only person, as mentioned earlier, that we have direct interaction with is our auditor, who actually took a pay cut for this role because as deputy auditor who did most of the work was paid more than he is now as our auditor. We are creating a threshold, to me, that is unsustainable. We are creating a threshold, to me, that is unsustainable in the separation of pay between department workers and the department leaders. I was willing to oblige that in lieu of this being a respectful process, but I no longer feel that way. I just no longer feel that way. So, as amended, as presented, I'm not going to support this tonight. I'm sorry.
Any further counsel discussion or comments? I'd just like to make a few comments myself before we vote. I realize that there are things in this bill that probably every single one of, every single council member has some issue with. I get that. There are parts of this bill that I don't like. But this was a bill to address the issues as they were presented to us, including the surveyor's salary. And I would urge my council members to, in all seriousness, as we enter the budget season, give serious consideration to supporting this bill in a bipartisan manner because it does take care of elected officials across the bipartisan scope of our elected officials. So I would respectfully ask that you consider supporting this bill for our elected officials.
I guess I have an issue with, and correct me if I'm wrong, the three elected officials that we're talking about as far as the difference of a raise from 90,000 to 100,000, but now we're saying that the surveyor is looped into that?
He is part of this bill, yes. The amendment did pass.
And I, I have a, I have a major issue with that because I just, I feel like they're two separate, totally different bills because, or reasoning, because we were just made aware of this misunderstanding or lack of knowledge for the surveyor licensed and unlicensed two weeks ago. So, to have that as part of the difference in 90,000 and 100,000 with the clerk, the auditor, and the assessor, I don't see the logic to that at all. And I guess I would respectfully ask, because of that, we tabled the whole thing. And the other reason why I'm going to put that out there is because, like we're saying, we're days away from the budget. So I just, I just don't understand that logic of the surveyor being lumped in with the three other elected officials because the reasoning is like night and day. The surveyor was because of the lack of the protocol, the knowledge of the protocol from this council. And I'm not pointing fingers at anyone, but that's, that's the reality of it. So for, for these four, that position to be lumped in with the other three, it just doesn't make any sense to me at all.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tanner?
I want to rehash that. I appreciate that there's been a considerable amount of work, conversations, and effort put behind the proposal that's before us now. There's obviously some disagreement over here on what the exact dollar amount should be, the appropriateness of doing it this time of the year, changing it after people ran with a certain pay already established. That being said, I want to touch on one other aspect of appropriateness that I've been confounded on from the beginning, but as we sit here and discuss longer, I think is worth mentioning. It is unusual for the council to propose this outside of what departments and the department heads would independently propose so that we could evaluate them individually on their merit. I think it's inappropriate, the longer we discuss this and consider it, to be lumped together in a single decision without correlation to the departmental impacts within the budget. We can certainly do the math and get the advisement from our auditor, our financial advisor, but it's unusual that we're considering it under this format outside of every other appropriation and amendment to the budget that we make throughout the entirety of the
Thank you. Any further counsel discussion? Mr. Shetzel?
Yes. I, you know, I respect Mr. Tanner's right to disagree with me. I would like to let him know, though, that I did not just take Clerk Roloff's four pages here, two pages front and back.
There you go.
Sorry. I did not just take this and say, "Well, this must be how it is." I did speak with Tricia Carrico, who, if you know Ms. Carrico, she's not afraid to speak her mind, and she would not be afraid to tell me if some of this was not true, and she had no problem with this document. I would also say that I have mentioned to Michael Shadler of the Domestic Relations Bureau, Ms. Roloff's work with the courts and telling him, you know, "You may want to talk with her, find out what she's doing there. She's doing some good work, and this may help you folks as well." I have not heard anything negative back from him about that suggestion. I also spoke with the PSAP folks who are struggling to find Spanish speakers for the 911 center. They have, I think, two, which, to me, was, as you know, in committee, I was concerned about that. I mentioned to them as well that, you know, speak to Amy. She's, seems to be able to find qualified minorities to hire, well above and beyond what the previous clerk did, and I have not heard anything negative back to them about that suggestion. So I just wanted to share that, considering your concern.
Thank you. Any further counsel discussion on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll? Let me remind the council that we are voting on the bill as amended, so it includes the three positions that were originally in the bill along with the surveyor. Clerk, will you please take?
So, wait, second, so, question. So, I just expressed my disappointment in the surveyor being lumped into these three because they're two totally different situations. So, for that reason, if I vote no, then what does that really mean?
That means you're voting against the three raises, and you're voting against fixing the surveyor's salary.
That's why I have a major problem with the way this was set up. A major problem.
As I said earlier, I believe all nine of us probably have some major problems with every portion of this bill.
It never, it never should have been, it never should have been done like that.
Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Fig? Ms. Hess?
No.
Mr. Katanzright?
For all the reasons that were mentioned by my colleagues, Tanner, Hess, and Morton, I'm voting no as well.
Mr. Tanner? Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel? Mr. Morton?
No.
Passes 5-4.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 86-23 was passed by a vote of 5 to 4. Clerk, will you please read the next bill?
Bill Number 87-23, An Ordnance Mending Ordinance 115.22, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the
Council Committee Report, Mrs. Drake.
Bill Number 87-23 comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening. Once again, you get me because Dr. Serbin is unavailable today. This is an ordinance to increase the NIH director's salary by approximately $5,000 for compensation for earlier this year. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Any questions for the petitioner? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 87-23. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Hearing none. Public hearing on Bill Number 87-23 is over. May I have a motion on the bill?
For approval.
Second. Who was that?
Motion to approve was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilwoman Shetzel. Any further counsel discussion on this bill? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
You said yes? Okay. Mr. Fig?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 87-23 was passed by a 9-0 vote. Clerk, will you please read the next bill?
Bill Number 88-23, An Ordnance Mending Ordinance 115-22, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023, Petitioner Health Department.
Committee report, please.
Bill Number 88-23 comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
This is an ordinance to eliminate the deputy health officer position and salary associated with it. The Board of Health voted for that at their last meeting, and it now comes before you. It's part of the overall restructuring plan that was done by the board and the health officer.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 88-23. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Cheryl, you wish to speak in favor of this bill?
I wish to speak in opposition.
We're not quite there yet.
Thank you.
Anybody that would like to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing no one now, we're ready for those that would like to speak in opposition. Cheryl, go ahead. You have three minutes to address the council. Please give your name and address for the record.
Cheryl, next, 17901 Sable Ridge Drive, Clay Township. Thank you. I would like to make the following statement, that we should honor Dr. Fox's contract and have an obligation to pay it out. It is not done until February. Ms. Drake, my representative herself, said that SB4, the Health First Indiana Funding, would shore up the salary shortfall for the new health officer and never mention that Dr. Fox's position needed to be eliminated. At the May Board of Health meeting, the motion to hire a new health officer did not contain language that the hiring was contingent on the firing of a deputy health officer. The Health Department is operating in the black because of COVID funding. There is approximately $4 million available. The balance of Dr. Fox's contract is about $25,000. As Rose Meisner, President of the Community Foundation of St. Joseph County, said, "We have a real opportunity with SB4, but we could blow it." And one of the ways she said we could blow it is if we don't have expertise in the office. We have a new health officer coming into office who does not have a large background in public health. Dr. Fox does. We need to keep him in office. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to the bill online? Seeing no one, the public hearing on Bill Number 88-23 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill, please?
Motion to pass.
Second. We have a motion to pass Bill 88-23 by Councilwoman Drake, seconded by Councilwoman Thomas. Any further counsel discussion on this bill?
Yeah, President Root.
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes. I'm going to echo what I did last week at our committee meetings. I still believe it is short-sighted to eliminate the county's deputy health officer position because it is not necessary budgetarily. He could help onboard Dr. Shutham, and he could contribute to and review the application for the state public health dollars. At our committee meetings, Mr. Levin stated that Dr. Einters put in a wonderful structure that will get us a long way towards SB4. We've got that structure in place. I would imagine that Dr. Fox played a key role in building that structure and therefore has much institutional knowledge to impart to our incoming health officer, who assumes her role later this month. Especially as Mr. Levin pointed out, that most of the eight Health Department staffers that resigned worked for Dr. Fox's, Fox's, Dr. Fox in the Health Equity, Epidemiology, and Data Department, a job they all professed to love, by the way. I will add that Dr. Serbin shared with me that Dr. Einters and his team had done an incredible job collecting much-needed public health data for our county. I imagine Dr. Fox also contributed heavily to that effort. I also understand that by eliminating the funding for this position, this allows the Board of Health to wriggle out of its contract with Dr. Fox, which is currently in effect until February 2024. So, to me, it would make more sense to keep him in place to at least transition in our new health officer and get us established with SB4. So I will be voting against this. Thank you.
Any further counsel discussion on this bill? Councilman Shetzel?
I would like to remind everyone that six of the seven departments have had little to no personnel change, that Amy Rupe has been in the department for 25 years and has a boatload of institutional knowledge, and that Dr. Parisha, I'm sorry, Prushatham is an incredible physician with incredible experiences in not just taking care of patients, but building systems. And she will do a fine job.
Is there any further counsel discussion on this bill? Seeing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Katanzright?
No.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
No.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
And Ms. Hess?
Mr. Murphy?
President Root, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I believe it's 6-3.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 88-23 was passed by a vote of 6-3. Our next bill is Bill Number 89-23.
An Ordnance Mending Ordinance 115-22, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023, Prosecutor.
Committee report, please. Councilwoman Drake?
Bill Number 89-23 comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Yes, Bob Reisenhofer, Prosecutor's Office, offices on the 10th floor of this building. We're requesting an out-of-line transfer to move money from our pre-trial diversion fund to other contracted services. This is available because of a hiring difference. We were without the person for about two months.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 89-23. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak against? Seeing no one, the public hearing on Bill Number 89-23 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill?
Move for approval.
Motion for passage.
Second.
Was that Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Yes.
A motion to pass was made by Councilman Katanzright. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further counsel discussion on this bill? Seeing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanz-Rite?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let's record show that bill number 89-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Our next bill is bill number 90-23.
Bill 90-23, a more, uh, an ordinance amending ordinance 115-22, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner, prosecutor?
Committee report, please.
Bill number 90-23 comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Yes, we're asking for a salary amendment for our victim advocates. Uh, each of our victim advocates now are certified advocates, which is rare in the state, but, um, this money will be paid out of the prosecutor's pre-trial diversion fund.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Mr. Shetzel?
So, you're asking for this because they've gained certification?
Yes.
The first year of certification, they get a $4,000 increase. Each year thereafter,
they maintain that certification, they get $2,500. Takes approximately 40 hours of study to be certified.
And just for the sake of the public, um, how does that certification make them better at their job?
Well, they're trained better on how to handle different types of cases. There's certifications for felony cases, there's certifications, there's actually four different levels, and the felony level takes four years' worth of, uh, experience. So, it's just enhancing your own knowledge of how you handle different cases, and particularly the victims. These are all victim advocates, so they're trained better on what those needs are for the people coming in for different crimes.
Thank you.
Any further counsel questions for the petitioner? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing on bill number 90-23. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who gets, wishes to speak against? Seeing no one, the public hearing on bill number 90-23 is now closed. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved was made by Councilman Shetzel. It was seconded by Councilman Tanner. Any further counsel discussion on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanz-Rite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let's record show that bill number 90-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you.
Our next bill is bill number 91-23.
Bill 91-23, an ordinance amending ordinance 115-22, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner, Probate Court slash JJC.
Councilwoman Drake, committee report, please.
Bill number 91-23 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Uh, Cheryl Rush, Controller at St. Joseph Probate Court, 1,000 South Michigan Street. Uh, these appropriations are for the community, community corrections grant from IDOC. We have four salary amendments. No county match is required. However, we do supplement the two salaries with probation user fees because the positions are probation officers.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner from the council? Seeing none. We'll move to public hearing on bill number 91-23. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak against? Seeing no one, the public hearing on bill number 91-23 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill, please?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved was made by Councilman Fig. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further counsel discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanz-Rite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let's record show that bill number 91-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. That concludes our salary amendments. Uh, next up is a public hearing on public comments and fiscal matters. All fiscal matters were heard at our June committee meeting and discussed at that time by the council. Uh, and so, clerk, will you please read bill number 83-23?
Bill number 83-23, an ordinance appropriating and transferring monies for the purpose herein specified for the several departments herein listed of St. Joseph County Government.
Thank you. May I have a motion? Uh, well, uh, let's go to public hearing. Let's have a public hearing on bill number 83-23. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak on any matter of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against any manner, part of this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of any part of this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak against any part of this bill? Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed on bill number 83-23. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion approved was made by Councilman Fig. It was seconded by Councilman Thomas. Any further counsel discussion on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes, except items, uh, F and H. F as in Frank and H, no on those.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Catanz-Rite?
Yes, for the ordinance with the exception of items F and H. F as in Frank, H as in Henry.
Okay. Mr. Tanner?
Yes, with the exception of item F.
F, okay. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
It passes nine zero, except for items F and H, which passed seven, two, and F, which passed eight, one.
Thank you. Let's record show that bill number 83-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Portion F was passed by a vote of, I'm sorry, clerk, did you say seven to two?
Yeah, and I, I, actually, F is, actually, um,
Six, three?
Six, three, yeah, I missed that.
Portion F was passed by a vote of six, three, and portion H was passed by a vote of eight to one.
Seven, two.
Seven, two.
Yeah, I missed that up.
Thank you. So, nine, zero on the bill, six, three on F, seven, two on H. Thank you. Let the record reflect that. That concludes our public hearing, public comments, fiscal matters. Next up is miscellaneous. We have bill number 76-23.
Bill number 76-23, collective bargaining agreement between the St. Joseph County, Indiana Commissioners and the telecommunicators of St. Joseph County, Indiana, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. Petitioner, PSAP.
Committee report, please. Mrs. Drake?
Bill number 76-23 comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Julie Toby, Executive Director for PSAP, 58266 Downey Avenue. Um, we completed our three-year contract agreement with the collective bargaining group, uh, which will reflect our 2024 budget proposal. Um, just a few quick highlights. We wanted to focus on the annual whole group, specialty group, and individual impacts. Um, one of them being the telecommunicator salary increase of 5% to get us closer to what our surrounding 911 centers are starting their employees off at. Uh, we increased the longevity brackets by $300, which will start on year three. Um, we are trying to implement a employee incentive, referral incentive, um, and our shift differential by 50 cents. We are still hoping to continue to hire, train, and retain any dispatchers, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing on bill number 76-23. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the bill? Seeing no one in the room, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone online who wishes to speak against? Seeing no one, the public hearing on bill number 76-23 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill, please?
Motion approved. Second.
Motion approved was made by Councilman Fig. It was seconded by Councilman Thomas. Any further counsel discussion on the bill? Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take the moment to thank Courtney, Steve, uh, Mr. Agostino, and all those who were involved with tailoring this to the current format that was presented today. It was a lot of effort and representation of, uh, the collective best interest of everybody in the agreement. Thank you so much.
Any further comments on this bill? Seeing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanz-Rite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let's record show that bill number 76-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. That concludes miscellaneous. Next up is land use planning. We have bill number 78-23.
Bill number 78-23, an ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 154 Planning and Zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located at 51340 Bittersweet Road from B Business District and R Single Family District to B Business District. Petitioners, Sukin Yun Park.
Thank you. Mr. Fig, committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Bill number 78-23 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Area plan?
Good evening. This is Carl Brongrimm, Area Plan Commission staff. We have offices on the 7th and 11th floor of this building. Uh, so this first petition, uh, they're looking to rezone their full property to B Business District. Uh, they have plans to expand the, uh, existing retail and build a new retail space on site. Uh, the site is located on the north section of the Bittersweet Road corridor, uh, and it's currently split zone B Business and R, uh, Single Family Residential. On site is a current wig boutique, uh, building shop that also has a residential space included in the top section of that building, and an accessory, uh, structure there that's going to be renovated. This is the, uh, Bittersweet Road. Um, the county engineer has indicated that the petitioner will be required to, uh, install an acceleration and deceleration lane, uh, right there at the entrance, uh, for traffic considerations on Bittersweet. There it is, looking north. This is the proposed site plan. Uh, it shows a new, uh, 9,500 square foot building, uh, that will be used for retail, in addition to some, uh, more pavement and, uh, more parking spots. Staff is in support of this rezoning, uh, given its fit with a comprehensive plan, uh, and the opportunity to remove split zoning on the property. Uh, this will allow for more consistent development into the future. Uh, it does come to you with a unanimous favorable recommendation from the Area Plan Commission. Uh, no members of the public spoke in favor or against the petition at that meeting, and I will take any questions you might have.
Any question from the council? Hearing none. Petitioner?
Thank you. Mike Danch from Dan Charner and Associates, 1643 Commerce Drive here in South Bend, representing the petitioner. Carl had mentioned what we're asking to do here is to get rid of a split zoning on a piece of property on Bittersweet Road. The petitioners would like to plan ahead. What they would like to be able to do is add an additional retail space on their property. As Carl had mentioned, there's an existing retail space now in the existing home that's on the northwest corner of the site. There is a pole barn that's on the property. They would like to renovate that pole barn and also add some additional retail space there. The back building would be in the future. Uh, that was the one that Carl had mentioned, about 9,500 square feet. It would also be retail space. The, uh, owners are aware of the county engineer's requirement for deceleration lane, which is fine. That would be part of the final site plan procedure. What we have also done here is, is that we've added the, uh, buffering between the residential that's adjacent and to the east and to the north of this particular site, so that there will be, uh, screening that's required by the zoning ordinance, and any lighting will be completely shielded, so that there's no light spillage from this property onto any adjacent residential properties. And if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner?
President Root?
Mr. Shetzel?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to thank Mr. and Mrs. Park for taking on the responsibility of making what is small but a bit of an eyesore on Bittersweet Road into something beautiful. So, thank you.
Any further counsel questions for the petitioner? Hearing none. We'll move to public hearing on bill number 78-23. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing no one in the room, is there anyone online? Jen, do we get anybody online? That wishes to speak in favor? Anybody that wishes to speak in opposition online? Seeing no one, the public hearing on bill number 78-23 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill, please?
Motion to approve.
Passage?
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilman Shetzel. It was seconded by Councilman Tanner. Any further counsel discussion on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanz-Rite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let's record show that bill number 79-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Our next bill is bill number 81-23? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm off one. Uh, that was 78-23, passed by a vote of nine to zero. Our next bill is 79-23.
Bill 79-23, an ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 154 Planning and Zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located at 25572 and 25590 State Road Two, from C Commercial District to R Single Family District to C Commercial District. Petitioner, Gupta Singh.
Thank you. Committee report, please. Mr. Fig?
Yes, Mr. President. Bill number 79-23 comes to the full council without a recommendation.
No recommendation. Thank you. Petitioner? Or, I'm sorry, area plan?
Yeah. Uh, this is Carl Brongrimm again. Um, so here we have plans to demo a vacant commercial building, uh, that used to be a restaurant, and, uh, existing residential building, uh, to build a gas station, uh, convenience store combo. Uh, the property is located along the south side of State Road Two, uh, approximately 2,000 feet east of Quince Road and west of the US 20 bypass. Similar to the previous petition, uh, this property is split zone commercial, uh, in the north and residential in the south. Uh, here you can see the old commercial, uh, building to be demolished, uh, along with the residential building. Uh, this is what the State Road Two corridor looks like at the proposed site. Uh, this is looking east. Sorry, this is looking west. This is looking east. Uh, here is the proposed site plan, uh, as we have it today. Uh, it shows the, uh, proposed convenience store, uh, along with two feeling canopies. The one at the north end is for cars, and the one at the south end is for trucks. Um, the county engineer has indicated, as you are aware from, uh, committee, that, uh, the petitioner will need to work with INDOT to get these accesses approved. Uh, so staff did provide a favorable recommendation on this, uh, petition due to the characteristics of the area being suitable for commercial development and removing that split zoning that, uh, allows for consistent development in the future. However, this comes to you with a five to one vote for an unfavorable recommendation from the Area Plan Commission after a favorable motion received a four to two vote, failing to reach that five-vote threshold to pass. Uh, there were concerns from board members at the Area Plan Commission meeting regarding the safety, uh, of that access plan, uh, given the truck presence and a lack of a signalized light at the turning point. Uh, at the meeting, one member of the public spoke in favor of this petition, and, uh, two spoke against, against setting those safety issues, uh, and traffic concerns, especially regarding the trucks on the property. And I will take any questions if you have them.
Any questions from the council for area plan?
Do, uh, yes, can you tell me, did they have the INDOT inspection, and did INDOT take a look at that property yet and make any decision?
So, I will let, I will let the petitioner answer that one.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the area plan? Petitioner?
Thank you. Mike Danch from Dan Charner and Associates, 1643 Commerce Drive here in South Bend, representing the petitioner. Uh, Carl did a good job of, uh, basically seeing what we had. This is another piece of property that's in the county. It's one of those remnant ones where we have a split zoning between It's one of those remnant ones where we have a split zoning between commercial and residential. What we are asking to do is basically zone the south end of the property for commercial uses. We would be allowed today to go ahead and proceed and build the convenience store and with the gas canopies on the portion that is zone C commercial. I just want counsel to be aware of that. But what we're trying to do is get rid of that split zoning so that the entire site has a consistent zoning. From the standpoint of, yes, I have contacted the Department of State Highways. I actually was on the line with the supervisor for the La Porte District Office this morning. They, based on what we have given them to take a look at, if we go ahead and submit a, what we call a highway permit plan, which would be required for the two access points that you see here, those would be approved by the state. Now, what they would do is also take a look at the east driveway to see if they would allow for a full access point for that, but that would be part of the highway permit plan. What they would also require us to do as part of that is that what I had discussed at the land use committee meeting is that on the eastbound lane, they would ask us to go ahead and place a de-acceleration lane in for any traffic that would be coming from the west into this particular site. The reason for that would be to have that additional off the travel lane area so that if any trucks or cars are coming into this particular site for that right in, right out only, they would be completely off those travel lanes. It would be a lane by itself for what we call de-acceleration into the site, and that would be part of the approval for the state highway permit. What I also found out from the state was is that they're in the process of doing some updates for State Road Two in this particular area. Right now, a portion of our site has a left turn lane on that, kind of that northeastern portion. The supervisor had told me that the state has plans to basically add additional left turn lane, excuse me, all the way to Quince Road. That may happen this year or that may happen next year. So what will happen is where that median is, is that will now be a left turn lane all the way to Quince and Two. And that was part of their procedures. I had also asked them whether they were aware of the battery plant that was going to be going in, in the county. They are aware of that also. They've actually had discussions with Sky Meadows, the county engineer, because I know we had questions about that at the land use committee meeting. There is an intent also to do the signalized intersection, I believe, at Larison Drive for that particular location when that plant would be up and running. They're working with the county on that particular portion. As I had mentioned, what we're trying to do is take down the old restaurant building and the house and do a convenience store with the fuel center. And if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
So, Mr. Danch, you're saying that even if we vote this down, you can still proceed?
Yes, we would be able to. The north portion of the site is zone C commercial, and since it is zone C commercial, that's a permitted use. Yes. And what we're trying to do is get rid of that split zoning that's there.
President Root.
Mr. Shetzel?
So the state is saying that if we can get that light in, and they're saying that light won't go in until the battery plant is completed, that's going to slow that traffic down some?
Well, it'll help with the truck traffic that goes there. One of the things that, when I had discussed with them about that additional truck traffic, that that's why we would also be doing the de-acceleration lane for this particular project so that if you do have any trucks that would be entering the site, they would be able to pull completely off of State Road Two. Because as we had discussed on this, that traffic, speed limit is fifty, but we know that traffic goes a lot faster than fifty miles an hour on this section. And so that was one of their safety features as well that they would put in for a requirement.
Thank you.
Any further counsel questions for area plan? Mr. Thomas?
So to be clear, Mr. Danch, you're going to put the deceleration lanes?
Yes, we would be required to.
East and west?
That's what, yeah, there's the ones that they require. So the de-acceleration lane would be coming into the site. They have what's called an acceleration lane when you're leaving the site and going east, and they would require those too. And we would have to meet the state requirements for that.
Also, the center lane you said is, explain that again, from Quince to?
So right now, what's going to end up happening, from what they had told me, a portion of that existing left turn lane that goes way east almost over to the bypass, they're going to extend it west all the way to Quince Road. So that median that you see now that's there that goes from this site all the way to Quince, that grass area, that's going to be eliminated and there'll be a left turn lane. Thank you.
Any further, Mr. Morton?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, we just denied a similar proposal that was pretty much right up the street?
Are you talking about the one at Quince and Two?
Yes.
Okay. The one at Quince and Two, though, keep in mind, there's some differences here. The one at Quince and Two was a smaller site. The one at Quince and Two had two driveway openings. There is an opening on the eastern portion of that site, which was only about ninety-eight feet away from that signalized intersection. Their driveway coming up, or I should say, south on Quince to that intersection, their driveway opening that they have out there today is only about seventy feet south of that intersection. Okay. That's very close if you were having traffic come out and try to turn and get to that signalized intersection. There's also not a de-acceleration lane on the Quince one. So in essence, you have a partial shoulder.
Okay. I mean, that's fair as far as the comparison. But there again, because of the present zoning, you can still proceed?
Yes.
Regardless of what we say tonight?
Yes, as long as I keep everything in the C commercial portion, yes.
I just, I don't know. I just think it's a very counterintuitive to, based upon what the traffic is at, you know, I travel that all the time.
I understand, yeah.
On a very consistent basis.
Yeah, and that's why.
I just, I don't get it. I really don't. From a purely safety perspective, I just don't get it.
Yeah.
I mean, wasn't that at one time that Quince, and I know we're not talking about Quince, but it's right up the street? Wasn't that considered one of the most dangerous intersections in this county?
I think that.
And I believe that's correct.
Yeah, I think there were a lot of issues with the traffic.
I'll say it for the record one more time, I really don't get it.
I am.
Anyway, obviously that doesn't matter.
Any more questions for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll move to public hearing on Bill number seventy-nine dash twenty-three. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the bill? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
We'll take that one. My name is Tom Rowe, two-six-one-six-zero Lake Lane. I live in the Red Heart Edition. I live out there, okay? I live out there. I see what happens out there. We were promised that we're going to get bumper, you know, the bumper stop both ways. We were promised that there was going to be markers for traffic that was coming from the west to the east. Now it's all contingent upon the new plant that's out there. People forget to mention that where they're going to position this gas station, there's one that's just down the road, no more than a quarter of a mile, third of a mile. So that's one thing people forget to mention, that the South Bend Speedway is there too. Okay, so there's a lot of issues as far as traffic flow. I don't see what, I mean, I live there. I don't see what the problem is as far as tabling this, but apparently, according to this gentleman, doesn't matter what you as a council say, it's already a done deal. They're going to go through with it. So why is he even presenting, why are we even hearing this if he already says that it's a done deal? With that, I pass.
Dan Caruso, three-zero-five Compton Street. This is nonsense. What good does it do to take out the middle strip all the way down to Quince Road? There's already turn corridors in that center strip to go into the businesses on the south side of the road. Now that Two is going to be the truck corridor into the I E, into GM Project, anything out there in the IEC, look for truck traffic just to increase crazy. And to allow, to allow the trucks to make a left turn into there to get fuel or whatever they're going to do and come back out to make another left turn across all, basically three lanes, then to head west again? Unless, I agree, that is a better location for that service station than was Quince and Two because the residential, it's a bigger residential area. That was my concern. This is a more appropriate location for it if the state will say no left turns into and out of that service plaza. So the trucks coming to the east go in, when they come back out, they continue on to the east, but you can't have trucks coming from the bypass waiting in line to turn left and blocking traffic on Two going east to get into the gas station, and then when they come back out, block the lanes again as they try to cross the three lanes to head back west into the IEC. It just does not make, it's not good sense. It's dangerous. You think there's accidents at that Two and Quince intersection, those, that'd be a carnival compared to what's going to happen up there where this would go in. This is foolish. Mr. Danch, I sure hope you're kidding and saying you can go ahead with this project. Whether these guys vote against it or for it, it'd be, it'd be suicide to go for this for anybody using that road. I use that road a lot. I use that road probably more than everybody here. That is just nonsense. It is absolutely crazy to think that that's a good place to put a service station without restricting left-hand turns into and out of that gas station. And if they don't want to do that, Mr. Danch says, we can still put it in. Tough nonsense.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition in the room? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the bill? Seeing no one, the public hearing on Bill number seventy-nine dash twenty-three. There is somebody online?
Sharon, Sharon next, Sharon next. I did have my hand up. I'm sorry, I was a little slow to get it up to talk against the bill. Is it too late?
No, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that this morning at the Board of Commissioners meeting, there was a settlement made when there was an issue where someone died on the road and the family sued the county, and there was a forty thousand dollar settlement made on the case. And I'm just imagining, I'm just imagining lawsuits. I'm imagining crashes, and I'm imagining injuries, and I think it's unfortunate that it appears the county council doesn't have the power to stop this. Thank you.
Is there anyone else online who would wish to speak against the bill? If not, the public hearing on Bill number seventy-nine dash twenty-three is now closed. The petitioner will have five minutes to rebut the remonstrators.
As I had mentioned, the state's going to have the total jurisdiction on that. And I want to clarify one thing. On the east driveway, I did not say that that was going to end up being a full driveway opening. I said that that would be a request. It would still be up to the state. When I talked to the supervisor, they still take a look at everything from a safety standpoint to determine whether they would be able to get that full access on that eastern driveway. If they don't do that, then both of the drives would be right in, right out only. I just want counsel to be aware of that particular part of it. But we will have to abide by all states and that's the requirements, and that's why the de-acceleration lane would be very important at this location. All the people that have spoken on this, if you take a look at anything that's along State Road Two right now, there are no de-acceleration lanes into any of the driveways, into the Speedway location, into the one at Quince and Two. They're basically just driveways that come straight out onto the travel lanes. In this particular case, because we're changing that use, we are required to do the updated information for the state highway permit plan, and because of the traffic that's here, the speed limit, we would be required to do that de-acceleration lane, and that brings up the safety issue. That helps get that traffic off those travel lanes. Thank you. If you have anything else for me, I'd be glad to answer.
Is there a motion on Bill number seventy-nine dash twenty-three?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve was made by Councilman Thomas. It was seconded by Councilman Fig. Any further counsel discussion on this bill?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Tanner?
I'll defer to Mr. Katanzright, who spoke up before I did.
Okay.
Mr. Root?
Yes, Mr. Katanzright?
Well, I respect the proposal to make an improvement to the current site that's there. I do have a lot of safety concerns that have been echoed tonight by both remonstrators and other council members. State Road Two is a very, very difficult highway, to say the least, and that we have a lot of commercial and industrial development along it, and the state hasn't probably put enough thought at this point in time into making it a safer highway. The signalized intersection at Larison, the State Road Two, is a great idea, especially as the Samson GM plant develops and the IEC does, but that's five to six miles west of this location, which still gives vehicles a lot of time to increase their speed. I know Mr. Danch talked about the de-acceleration lane. He also mentioned an acceleration lane that would go east from there, and surely after this property, you've got Poppy Road or the Dollar General comes out on the State Road Two. I just don't think the acceleration lane is going to be the answer necessarily for this property to make it safer, and I know we've already got the convenience store at Quince and Two, which is problematic at times, the way it's developed and designed, but we do have same kind of fuel situation down at Mayflower and State Road Two with Martin Supermarket. I believe Catty Corner, there's another fuel station, so we're not without fuel stations in the area. And essentially with this convenience store, gas station, we've got a Dollar General right next door to it as far as the convenience store. I don't think we're lacking for fuel resources in the area. What scares me the most is a semi truck pulling in there, or worse yet, a semi truck pulling out of there at a slower speed and having a vehicle not paying attention to coming up behind it. I just, I'm really concerned about the safety of this site, and I wish my fellow counselors would join with me in voting this down for now until the state comes up with a better plan and makes State Road Two a safer highway. Just to the west of there, within a month, at Peach Road, you've got a fire station opening up in Warren Township at Peach Road and Grant, which will be utilizing Peach Road to enter State Road Two for their emergency responses. This is just west, the first street west of this property by maybe a quarter of a mile. So I mean, you're going to have a lot of mix of different things happening on State Road Two that's going to be a little bit different going forward within the next month and going forward with the IEC plan. So I would ask my other council members to support for this time period until the state comes up with a better plan to vote to deny this rezoning, even though Mr. Danch says that they can go through with the convenience store on the already zone portion of the property. I don't think we should add to it by doing the diesel pumps, which I think would put a more dangerous vehicle into that property, both coming in and exiting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further counsel discussion? Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank everybody for their patience on this somewhat decisive topic, but I think one thing to keep in mind procedurally is that what we are charged with doing on this is approving a rezoning. We're not approving this site plan. We're not approving the actual use of this gas station. We're not approving what INDOT's plans are within their own right of way. We're not approving what, in some cases, it's counterintuitive because we represent the residents. We're not necessarily representing the resident's safety concerns in this because we are not the technical experts on the safety as it relates to stopping site distance, intersection site distance, deceleration, acceleration, et cetera. That is ultimately up to our county engineer and the Indiana Department of Transportation to determine what's right and appropriate, which may include extensive infrastructural investment on the point of the private property owner, which they have to determine if it's viable or not after learning of what all those expenses are, including the probably tens of thousands of dollars of consultancy fees it's going to take to develop those plans. That's why it's before us now, because the first step is getting the rezoning taken care of. And in this particular case, we have a property that happens to be two different zoning classifications on a single parcel. that happens to be two different zoning classifications on a single parcel. What is our purpose as a council? What's the highest and best use of this parcel? And does the highest and best use of this parcel involve changing the zoning to commercial uniformly? That's what we're charged with tonight. We could pretend that we're up here to talk about safety, and that could very well be a legitimate concern of every single person on this body, but that's not what we're here to decide. At the end of the day, whether it's just the front half of the property that a commercial development is on, or the entire property, that's not for us to decide. It's what is the highest and best use of this property? And there's a residential portion of this property that is landlocked from everything else. Again, I have a personal inclination to think that it's going to be prohibitive to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars potentially on acceleration and deceleration lanes to meet the requirements of NDOT, to meet the requirements of the county engineer, and actually build this. But that's not for me to decide. It's for us to approve what the zoning change is, and then ultimately for the private investor and operator to determine if it's worth that expense after we make this decision and after NDOT and the county engineer and the planning department provides the guidance and approvals that they're required to make. For that reason, I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I wanted to be very explicit in why. It is because it's a rezoning approval, not a plan review. This is a preliminary site. It could be a wishing well. It could be a circus. It doesn't matter as long as it meets the commercial zoning requirements after it's done. What goes in this site may look completely different than what we're looking at today. So again, to reinstate that or reassert that, I'm voting in favor of this because it's simply the rezoning and the highest and best use of this split parcel.
Any further council discussions? Chair, Councilman Thomas?
I just want to echo, Mr. Tanner explained it well, and they're already approved. And I totally agree with Mr. Morton, what he was saying. And they're already approved. And you're not going to stop them from putting anything out there, but Mr. Tanner hit it right in the head. There's a lot of other hoops it looks like they're going to have to go through for our hope, safety reasons. And Mr. Tanner explained those reasons well. And I just want to echo both of you what you just said.
Any further council discussion on this bill?
I guess just one more point of clarification. I understand that a part of it is already zoned commercial, and this is directed at Mr. Dance. There again, just a point of clarification, and I understand what you're saying, Mr. Tanner, but a yes vote, correct me if I'm wrong, a yes vote tonight, even though you can proceed at a certain level, a yes vote tonight gives you the opportunity to proceed for an even bigger establishment? Or am I wrong in that?
No, you would, there'd be two.
I'm not wrong in that, right?
No, there's two things that always go with rezonings. One is, is that if you approve the rezoning, yes, the entire site would now become C commercial. Then you're allowed to put any permitted use under C commercial that you.
So that's what I'm saying. A yes vote tonight gives the opportunity for the establishment to even be bigger.
They could, they could do a retail space if they wanted to, absolutely.
And that means even potentially more traffic?
Potentially, it could be.
I want to make sure that I'm thinking about this correctly.
Yeah. The only reason that we were doing it based on our site plan and what we see for the use was that that other area was going to be used for the septic system area and retention area. My discussions with the planning staff, because of the way the zoning ordinance is written, was that if I went ahead and did this, and that our residential stayed, I could not put the septic system area or the retention area in the residential area. We would have to have it all zoned C commercial. So when I said that I can go ahead and do the commercial development on that north end, what I need to be able to do is to put in, like we're seeing, the gas pumps, they may be smaller than that. The building may get smaller. I would put all the drainage on that C commercial portion. It would end up being under the pavement that's there. And they would put a, basically, the septic system at the back end of the property, but it would still all fall within that commercial area.
So at the end of the day, a yes vote enables you to potentially have a larger establishment?
You could do that, yes, absolutely.
Any further council discussion on this bill? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess? Mr. Katanzerite?
No.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
No.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes six, three.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number seventy-nine dash twenty-three was passed by a vote of six to three. Our next bill is bill number eighty-one dash twenty-three.
Bill number eighty-one dash twenty-three. An ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council amending Title Fifteen, Chapter One Fifty-four, land usage of St. Joseph County Code to allow data center as per a permitted use in the I Industrial District and adding a definition for data center. Petitioner, St. Joseph County Area Plan Commission.
Abby Wiles.
Thank you. Chairman Fig, committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Bill number eighty-one twenty-three comes to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
I apologize. Abby Wiles, APC Director, part of IPG Offices on the Seventh and Eleventh Floor. Data centers are currently interpreted by staff to be a permitted use in the Industrial District. However, in working with prospective businesses in the site selection process, having them laid specified as a permitted use and adding a corresponding definition removes ambiguity and just makes certain that data centers are permitted. The definition that is in front of you today is identical to the one that was included in the IEC overlay district, where data centers are already a permitted use by right. This adds it to the Industrial District countywide. Came to you with a favorable recommendation from the Area Plan Commission, six, zero, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we'll move to public hearing on this bill. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Please come, state your name for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, Jeff Ray, President/CEO, Southern Regional Chamber with offices at 101 North Michigan Street here in downtown South Bend. Here to speak in favor of this. Appreciate the Area Plan Staff recognizing this. This is obviously an emergency, emerging industry that's important to the state of Indiana. Our region is attractive to these types of uses, as demonstrated by the construction in recent years of data realty and the large data center in the former Union Station Technology Center as well. The availability and price of power in Indiana, the availability of water, the business and tax climate in Indiana, all have made this area conducive to it. These, as you inspect those other sites, these are clean, well-contained inside. You wouldn't know what was going on inside of these buildings traditionally. Because of the size and scale of a data center, we think the appropriate, that the area plan has interpreted this appropriately in terms of an industrial district, and we appreciate the clarity this brings to our processes. We're working with prospects and trying to convince them that St. Joseph County is a great place for them to make an investment. So encourage your support of the ordinance here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone who wishes to speak against online? Seeing no one, the public hearing on bill number eighty-one dash twenty-three is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill, please?
Motion approved. Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilman Fig. It was seconded by Councilman Tanner. Any further council discussion on this bill? Seeing no one, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
That was yes? I'll assume that's a yes. Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine, zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number eighty-one dash twenty-three was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next up is bill number eighty-two dash twenty-three.
Bill number eighty-two dash twenty-three. An ordinance to terminate written commitments concerning the rezoning of property generally located at three-one-zero-zero-zero Fillmore Road. Petitioners Kaminsky, Todd L., and Odious, Jill F., and Kaminsky, Tim V.
Committee report, please. Mr. Fig?
Yes, Mr. President. Bill number eighty-two dash twenty-three comes to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Area plan?
Abby Wiles, APC Director. This petition is similar to others that you've seen in the last couple of months that removes written commitments that were included as part of rezoning sixty-seven twenty. It included use restrictions that prohibited uses such as mine, heavy industrial uses such as mining operations, metal and scrap yards, junkyards, slaughterhouse, et cetera. All of these uses and more are now prohibited by the IEC overlay district that covers the entirety of the property. So the petitioner is requesting to remove the written commitments so as not to cloud title. Comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the Area Plan Commission, six, zero, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll move to public hearing on this bill. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of it? Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
Yes, Terry O'Brien, Economic Development Planner for the Department of Infrastructure Growth, Planning and Growth. Abby did a very good job explaining what's going on here. This is just cleanup so that we can move forward with the transfer of ownership from the Kamiskys to GM. Happy to answer any other questions that might have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing on bill number eighty-two dash twenty-three is now closed. May I have a motion? Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilman Tanner, was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
I sure looked like a yes.
Is he muted?
Did you hear that? Yes?
Yes, okay. Very good. Thank you. That's a yes. And President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine, zero.
Thank you. Let the record show bill eighty-two dash twenty-three was passed by a vote of nine to zero. That concludes our land use hearings for tonight. Next up is any unfinished business? Next up is any new business? Next up is any old business? Next up is privilege of the floor, limited to three minutes. On any item not on tonight's agenda, please come, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to address the council again. On any item not on tonight's agenda, we'll start with those in the room first.
Good evening. Dan Caruso, three-zero-five Compton Street, New Carlyle. I thank the commission for, the council for their dedication, their passion for what they're doing here. I see from just what we witnessed, this is being done from the heart, not to be mean. People make, are making decisions with, from what they believe. And I appreciate that. And I can live with it. If it's the majority decision, it's the majority decision. So now comes my point, sort of. If you don't like what you just witnessed, you need to vote. If you're part of those tens of thousands of registered voters in St. Joseph County who didn't vote this last cycle, and somebody up here is sitting there as a result of you not voting, it's sort of your fault. If somebody's sitting up there who voted, you're happy how things turned out tonight, then make sure you vote next time. That's how democracy works. Democracy's great. This is how it works. We all get a voice in this. But you have to use that voice on Election Day. Again, if you like how things worked, make sure you vote next time. Make sure the same people get up there. If you're unhappy about something that happened tonight, or any of the other nights, and you don't vote, quit bitching. Live with it, or get out there and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who'd like to speak tonight?
I do.
Come forward. You have three minutes to address the council. Please give us your name and address.
Beginning with Tom Row, two-six-one-six-zero Lake Lane, South Bend, Indiana, four-six-six-one-nine. I don't believe anything I'm going to say was on the agenda for tonight, okay? And I plead ignorance if it's already been decided. I know that the county commissioners voted to opt in. Maybe I missed it as far as the county council, whether they formally opted in or not. Okay. Like, then with that, I do state that if you do opt in, my opinion is that it comes with a caveat. With the council members not being health experts, I spent the grand majority of my life doing private counseling, working for different agencies. I still maintain my license here as a licensed clinical addiction counselor. So I defer because I know that I'm not an expert in most health matters. What I'm sharing with you is if it does opt in, hopefully the council members will delegate and defer to a large extent where the monies, monies are going and how it's being spent and prioritized to the health experts of this county. Hopefully, that's a decision that can be made, so it's not made straight up here that you have the courage to defer and say, let me trust the experts. Secondly, it wasn't, wasn't on the business for tonight. I don't know what the current status of Portage Manor is because it was shared that we would receive updates as far as what the status of Portage Manor is. I don't know whether that's tied into a lawsuit or not. You can't say anything. I'm just saying my piece. Last thing, Council Member Katanzerite, some time ago stated that there were more than adequate monies to support the area residents at Portage Manor. And I've never heard a response to what Council Member Katanzerite stated as to, are there monies or aren't there? I know this is question or statements. I don't get answers from you, okay? Understand that. But I want to make my point that it would be interesting to get some answers and some comments from you as a body, become more transparent with us as constituents. I wanted to come here more and more to become more involved in local government, and I will continue to do that. Thank you.
Jenny Piantek, twenty-two oh one Riverside Drive. I agree. I mean, I'd like to get more involved, trying to follow what's going on, try to go to the committee meetings, but so much happens behind closed doors, and I, I'm not quite sure where the transparency comes in. So I'm not sure what can be done about that or what anybody's willing to do. But when half of you don't know what's going on till something is announced, that seems like a real problem. So I know we're past Portage Manor. I'm glad you brought it up. At least you're all past Portage Manor. But I'm not, because my friends are still moving. And I visited some places, and I actually asked some of you if you have taken a trip to see where the residents get to go. And Mr. Thomas, you said that you stopped at Lake Park, and I'm wondering why you just drove by Miller Terror, Miller Beach Terrace. You really had to see it. So I'm just really quickly going to try and read these reviews of the plate, some of these places. Lake Park, this is the worst place you can put your loved one in. That was from two months ago. I have to say, it is the worst facility, how they treat people. Miller Beach Terrace, I've lived there, and it's awful. Do not leave your loved one here. It is dirty, the food is marginal and always cold. This place is horrible. Noble Senior Living, which is now Grand Marquis, eleven months ago, the elevator was not working. We had a huge problem with bedbugs so badly that a company... They had a huge problem with bedbugs so badly that a company who was brought in to deal with that problem said there were bedbugs crawling on residents. And that is a nursing home, and a lot of the people who are under 50 are now there in a nursing home where they don't belong. So I don't, I don't really see how these places are better than Portage Manor or safer, and you all promised repeatedly that you would make sure that these people went to safe and suitable facilities, and sorry, they're not. Another one for Noble Senior Living, I would never want to live in that place, I'd rather die. So, thank you so much. Job well done. You really did your research and put those people in a better place.
President Root, members of the council. I'm Walter Nagorski. I live at 625 P Ashway Street in South Bend. I and my young family then came here in 1964, and so I've been part of St. Joe County since that time and watching events very carefully. I speak as an ordinary citizen, but an informed citizen. I came to teach political science and political theory at the University of Notre Dame, and that's been my career. And what I wanted to do is, we conclude this long and difficult evening, is to remind you, well, you've had many difficult evenings, haven't you? But I wanted to remind you that a week ago, we celebrated our independence, and we celebrated it together. We celebrated liberty and self-government, self-government. And you realize that the self-government at the time of the revolution was county government and town, town place government and county government? And here, I'm tremendously impressed with the efforts you make across the board to deal with all these issues. You could be losing yourself in private pursuits, but you are giving yourself to the common good, and that's wonderful. That's an example for so many people, and we need that so much from citizens across the board, not only that they come to vote, but that they follow developments closely. And so I'm grateful for all the perspectives I heard here this evening, and I thank you on behalf of the citizens here for what you do. I would say this, that I especially cheered when I saw a meeting or so ago, you came together and hired a full-time health officer, and you did that unanimously. That was good to see. I would also want to comment that, as a citizen, I expect oversight and questioning, and I've seen some hard questioning tonight, but with respect to the Health Department and those who left the Health Department of their own will, any suggestion that they were harassed when they weren't simply being given oversight and questions raised, it's out of order not to expect oversight. That's what citizens expect of you. It was wonderful tonight to hear Commissioner Baxmeyer acknowledge the fact that all of you across the board have had a hand in the, a hand in getting the economic development for the county to the level that's reaching fruition in the next few years. It's going to be wonderful. The wonderful way to do things is to create jobs and sustain good family life and good economic life in this area. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you for your work tonight. I'm Deborah Doral, 21677 Autton Road, South Bend. It's good to see you all again. I am bringing to you tonight a follow-up on a letter, a couple of letters that I sent to every council member regarding care of the riverbanks and the river itself. We just heard tonight Commissioner Baxmeyer say that there are 340,000 users of the county parks. I don't think we have figures on how many people are using the city parks, the river, and the trails. However, according to this county parks board last month, the trails are one of the most popular things that is, that are happening in St. Joseph County right now. It came to my attention in late May that the city had been tasked with basically two staff members to make the entire riverbank look like Governor Kernan Boat Ramp Park. And they were getting a lot of pressures and not much funding and even less knowledge and understanding on this. It also came to my attention, and I sent this to you, a 19-page documentation on about six and a half years of efforts from the Ecological Advocacy Committee that was appointed by the city to address these kinds of issues, and they had very high-quality recommendations written up in a very formal way and presented, and they were basically ignored so that I became one of a litany of people who observed very destructive and damaging practices which are eroding the riverbank. And even though this is happening within the jurisdiction of the city, I think most of us in this room, including the people employed, would be hard-pressed to say where the county boundaries are along the rivers as opposed to South Bend and Mishawaka. So we are convening a task force, and I would appreciate it. I'm directing my comments mostly to the Land Use Committee. As you go into your budget season, Steve Slotson said this issue is a very big issue for the county parks as well. So we are trying to convene a cooperative effort to take a look at how we manage vegetation and trails and parks along the riverside in particular. I would appreciate it if someone would reach out to me from the Land Use Committee and also go deep with the parks themselves on this issue before you establish a budget. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to take advantage of privilege of the floor? Seeing no one in the room, is there anyone online who would like to speak during privilege of the floor? I don't think I see anybody, so a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
First, a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.